Okay, could we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
All right, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for the next part of the meeting, I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent, because under the roles, the superintendent runs the election of the board chair and board but well, the board chair, the chair runs it for the vice chair. So I'm going to turn that over to Chad.
Sounds good. Thank you. So the way this is going to work, we're going to start with the nomination for the school board chair.
Yeah, the order, if you want to.
I have a proposal that we put off the election of officers to the next meeting. So we have a chance to hear the community comments and not need board members, just so we get to know better what's going on.
So are you making a motion, Mr. Holman? What is the, what is the motion, please?
The motion is to postpone the election of the officers until the next meeting. And that Mr. Rodrick will stay in the chair, obviously, and for this meeting, as you were especially, now it gives us a chance to hear the comments and the new members to give us a sense of what's going on. So that's a motion.
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Twitchell has swaken up the motion discussion. Any other discussion?
Well, just my, the argument for it is, it was effective in someone's at the second meeting, and that you would maintain the chair until the next, it would just give us a chance to hear the comments, our chance for response back to the concerns, and to get to just, to get the board members to know better who's who, and maintain the current thing, maintaining it for later.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Board members? All right, well, no other comments. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion fails. All right, we will move forward in the agenda with nominations of board chair.
So again, the way this is going to work is, we're going to open the floor for nominations. Please remember, a nomination needs a second to go forward. After nominations have closed, the people that have been nominated will have an opportunity to, to speak about why they'd like to be the board chair. As soon as those have concluded, then we will vote on the nominees for board chair. As soon as we're done the board chair, we will use the same process for the vice chair. Any questions from the board before we open nominations? All right, at this point, then, we are opening nominations for the chair.
I'd like to nominate Sean Rodrick for chair.
Second.
And Brian seconded. And bear with us as we take notes, Amy and I are doing this together for one of the first times, so it may take a little longer for us to get everything recorded, so please be patient with us. We have a... Do we have any other nominations for board chair at this time? Practicing wait time, just to make sure. Are there any, so seeing no further nominations, then Sean, I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to speak on why you'd like to be the board chair. And again, that's, I should have said at the beginning, that's optional, it's up to you, but if you'd like to speak before the vote, you're welcome to do so.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, David, for the nomination, Brian, for the second. I appreciate it. I've been board chair now for, this will be going into my third year in this role. I've put a lot of time and effort hearing all voices. I've met with people who agree with decisions I've made, don't agree. I've gone to people's homes, I've gone to parks, I've met with board members, I've spent a lot of time, I've reached out to main school management to learn practices of other districts, reached out to other board members, I've put a lot of effort. I have a son who's in eighth grade who loves this school. I asked him today what he thought of Miranda Cook, and he said he's proud to be a Bear, he loves teachers, he loves going here, he's proud to go here. And I, I, I take my role very serious, and have some things that I will talk about later. Spent a lot of time, I have many pages of notes, I don't know if I'll read them all, but of things we can do to, you know, improve things, and, uh, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Sean. So at this time, we're going to vote on Sean Rodrick as chair of the RSU 38 Board of Directors. And there will be a yes and a no vote, and abstain if necessary. So having said that, all in favor of Sean Rodrick as chair? Please raise your hands high and be patient as we record those. Any all set? Okay, I'm all set as well. And any no votes? One no vote. And...
As past practice, all abstain.
And Sean's abstaining. Perfect. Sean has been elected the board chair for the next school year, so we will do this real quick with the nominations for the vice chair next, and then it's back to you at that point.
Okay, I was unsure.
Yeah, no, all good. So at this point, we're opening up nominations for the vice chair role. Any nominations? David?
I'd like to nominate Leslie Marco.
Second.
Leslie Marco, and who was the second? Annie, thank you. Are there any further nominations at the table? All right, Leslie, as is practice, if you'd like to speak before we vote, you're welcome to do so.
Well, running out of pose, I suppose I'm not trying to convince anybody. A lot of things that Sean said is true for me, too, except Sean puts in scad much more time than most any of us that are sitting up here, and has a lot of experience in the short time that I've been here. I've appreciated the support of everybody to help on board, anybody who's new, and be open to talking through any issue that comes our way. I think we do that very well. We lost some really great members in this past year or so, so it's just a matter of trying to shuffle, fill some spots. Rebecca did a really great job. I think I learned a lot from her, and she had a good way of doing that. I think that I could step in and try and help in the same way that Rebecca did, and we're going to miss her.
So, thank you very much, Leslie.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, with that in mind, again, we'll do yes, no, and abstain. So all in favor of Leslie Marco as vice chair? Please raise your hands. And, thank you. Any opposed, any no's? And Leslie, I thought you'd say you have seen, perfect. So with that, I turn the meeting back over to Chair Rodrick. Oh, Lance is coming, he's going to get, oh, perfect. Thank you, Chad.
Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. And accordance with the RSU 38 policy, BDCH, public participating, participation at school board meetings is under the following guidelines. For those attending Zoom, if you want to speak, you can send a message to Diane or raise your hand. When the folks in the room are done speaking, you will be able to speak. All speakers will please identify yourself and name the town you live in. Priority will be given to folks who live in the district, but as past practice, anyone who signs up to speak, I will allow to speak. We ask the comments be limited to three minutes. If someone has a similar view as you, you know, please reference their comments, and we want to hear from all stakeholders. Ask that you be respectful with constructive comments to the board. And I would also like to clarify, we address concerns of the board in accordance with RSU 38 policy. We welcome all respectful comments, concerns, and we ask that you not use any derogatory comments or use names of or identify comments of any district personnel. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in public setting, but can listen to board concerns folks may have. All speakers are to address the comments through the chair, and all questions must be through the chair. And can only be asked with the chair approval. And then as past practice and the policy, we will hear comments and get back to folks with their questions. It's not a debate. And thank everyone for being here tonight. So first up, we'll have Michelle Woodford.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Woodford. My husband and I reside in Reedfield. We currently have a daughter who's a sophomore in high school, and have three daughters who have graduated from the high school. Last meeting, Sean, you stated, quote, "I am perfectly fine with people being unhappy." That's quite a statement. I would like to know if you are also fine with the teachers who you put your trust in to educate your children being unhappy? Do you think they are able to put their best teaching selves forward with the current upper administration looming in their heads? With that said, I believe the survey conducted by the staff association should be heard. Concerns you wish to be addressed. The master schedule for elementary school is horrible. When asked for changes for the next year, we were ignored. Too many meetings, lack of respect for specialists. Leadership that understands how things work in our school, so the decisions made are what is best for students. Better communication with staff when changes are being considered. Listening to all the staff and addressing those concerns rather than just doing what the administration feels is best. Superintendent, maintenance, curriculum are all antagonistic towards teachers and our experience and abilities. HR has diminished greatly. Hiring in a timely manner. The superintendent seems to be slightly less combative this year, but he doesn't have a creative, innovative vision for our district. There is a feeling of uncertainty, which puts people into protective mode. Fear of retaliation is real. Communication needs to be improved. People with favored status seem to be privy to information, while others are left in the dark. I truly, I truly think our district is being damaged by our current superintendent. The single best move for our district would be for him to move on, or at least not have his contract renewed. If not that, the school board needs to become much more aware and involved to counter his autocratic poor management. I wish teachers had more voice, or at least considered, or at least considered before decisions are made. Stop micromanaging staff at the schools. Hold on to effective professionals. I wish the central office administration was quicker to allow grace and to communicate kindly. I often feel that there is lack of trust in staff. I have been called out for my attempts at solving problems and creatively seeking solutions. Those interactions have led me pulling back in the time I work above and beyond the contract. It sometimes feels that decisions are made, but blamed on others. For example, the removal of the garden at the middle school was a deputy make's suggestion, though that wasn't the full story. The need for water activities to include lifeguards was a school board decision that never went to the board. There have been times when our principal was clearly given a letter that referred to something at our building that was not written in his style, but he was told to send it out as his decision with his name under it. It feels shady. During the middle school restructuring, the phrase "that's not what the superintendent wants" was often used to shut down conversation. It felt as though a decision had been made and not communicated even through. Support staff who were advisors were granted a pay raise in the last contract of a fraction of a dollar per hour. After the contract was signed, a directive came that supported that support staff would no longer be allowed to be advisors. Again, this feels like bargaining did not occur in good faith. We're asking some people to do too much. For example, our assistant principal serves as athletic coverage at many evenings, which pulls him from meetings with leadership team. He has also been told he is the advisor coordinator. His athletic role pulls him from the advisor coordinate role. Meetings with master advisors, only one meeting was able to be attended at its full length. How can one person be all things to all people?
Michelle, if you could wrap up, please?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
These are our comments from our teachers.
Thank you. Next up, thank you, Michelle. Next up is Tom Maloki.
My name is Tom Maloki. I live in Reedfield. I have the distinct honor of sitting on both sides of the table, the side that you're on, and as a parent, grandparent, volunteer, mentor, and supporter of everything that goes on in this school. I love this school. My two children graduated from this school. My two grandchildren graduate, one graduated, one is a current sophomore in this school. I am an extreme supporter of everything Miranda Cook does. It's a great school, and that's why I moved here from New York. And if any of you want to talk about why I moved here, I'll see you in the parking lot afterwards. With, with that in mind, please be patient with me. I had eye surgery. These are not my words that I am reading. And I want to read the words that the Miranda Cook family has written about our school. That's very important to me. As I read these prior to the meeting, I started to shake, because as a dad, a parent, a grandparent, if this was going on in my family, I would say, oh, poo, we got a problem here. With that in mind, please allow me to continue reading what the Miranda Cook family has written. Procedures have been changed recently without the input of and clear communication to stakeholders. The procedure changes such as around the field, such as around the field trips that was not approved by the central office level are communicated without reasons attached. Thus, staff is not only left meeting from the changes, they are also left telling themselves stories that may not be far about central office administrators. Such procedures, including changes of substitutes not being able to attend field trips parentheses while chaperones can, which changes the nature of the advisee day out than the community day of caring. Next comment. Support for our faculty and staff filling positions are not, that are empty instead of assigning more responsibilities to, to people who are already overburdened. Next comment. Climate. Many staff members feel targeted and disrespected if they question any decisions. Actions at the district level look and feel like retaliation. Staff feels manipulated to accept or follow a hidden agenda. Staff do not feel respected. Next comment. I am concerned that the district doesn't and want, doesn't want to recognize and delve into the realities of how overworked and stressed many staff members are. I feel that the district cannot adequately support its staff and therefore its students. And if it is constantly looking out for positions, I have the feeling that cutting positions is more of a strategy than working to promote the necessity of well-staffed schools. Next comment. Top administration making major curriculum and staffing changes with no input. District elementary screening times and dates are not throughout or chorus, throughout not considering team members.
Mr. Maloki, if you could wrap up and please, that'd be great.
Okay. I'll have someone else read.
All right. Have you read a sentence or two you wanted to? All right, thank you. Next up, Patty Gordon.
Hello, everybody. Like Tom, I've been on both sides of this table. I am from Reedfield. I have lived in Reedfield for 35 years, and taught at this school for 20 years, and was on board with some of you for five years. And I'm here because, like what Tom said, when I saw the comments that our staff have written, I was really concerned. So I'm going to continue reading staff comments with my time. Thank you for letting me do that. These are staff comments. This is, there is a concerning pattern of limited transparency and questionable information sharing from district leadership. Wait, I forgot to say, I have two kids who went to Miranda Cook and graduated from here. Proud parent of Miranda Cook grads, and my husband is also a Miranda Cook grad from the first class that ever went through when it was a 712 school. Me, too? Yeah, we could talk about that. There is a concerning pattern of limited transparency and questionable information sharing from district leadership. Specifically, communications from the superintendent, financial director, curriculum director, and administrative team often appear to contain significant omissions or misrepresentations of facts. This communication approach has eroded trust and hampers effective collaboration between administration and staff. To improve district operations, establishing more transparent communication protocols and ensuring complete accurate information sharing should be prioritized. Independent verification of administrative claims would also benefit the decision-making process and rebuild stakeholder confidence. I'm also wanting to read these things to you because I know when I was sitting in your seat, that sometimes we didn't know what was happening. And so part of reading this is to inform you that this is what people are saying. Another staff person's comment. The loss of an HR person is disappointing. When questions are asked of the central office, there are many times that the answers are not clear, or answers change the next time it is asked. Another comment. I think the fact that we no longer have an HR director is not acceptable. There is no longer a clear line of who we can talk to if there is an employment issue. Discussing this type of issue with administrators is awkward at best and simply not appropriate. Another comment. Communication with the central office can be difficult and inconsistent. I find it hard to trust them with certain questions, or to reimburse me if I spend my own money on something. Another comment. Curriculum coordinator and school board member should be seen in school buildings to directly observe what's happening in the classrooms. Another comment. Superintendent and curriculum director do not respect staff. Another comment. Lack of connection between central office parentheses superintendent, maintenance, and curriculum, and school buildings and staff. Decisions are made without a true understanding of what's happening in our building. Fears of retaliation from the superintendent. Recruiting staff on a timely basis. HR is greatly diminished without Kate. Why is everyone in the CO leaving? Keeping up with surrounding districts with pay. Societal slash political influences. Another comment. Our superintendent is the biggest challenge for our district. He breeds distrust among staff. He intimidates staff by disciplining them if he hears that they are sharing information with families and greater community.
Patty, if you can finish up in the sentence, too?
Yep. Last, one sentence, last comment. Thank you. Building administrators have been giving too much work to compensate for not having an experienced, full-time human resource person. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Next up is Dominique Taylor.
My name is Dominique Taylor, and I live in Reedfield. I have three kids that go here, and I am, too, going to be reading some comments. Too many curriculum changes over a short amount of time, with little support implemented implementation and students' achievements. I am concerned that we don't have an HR person who should represent everyone working in the district. District admin does not visit schools or classrooms. They make decisions based on assumptions and not reality. Bussing for field trips, not having a full-time HR person, and having all HR responsibilities spread across everyone in the district. Not actually advertising, interviewing, hiring in a timely manner. Many people are interested in working here, but are, but we wait so long and the other schools snap them up. Lack of respect and trust in teachers. The word equitable is always used when changes are made within our school across the district. However, in reality, there are still so many inequitable things that happen. The problem are trying to be solved still exist. Example, no elementary school teachers equals all teachers losing a prep time during the week. There is so much fear in retaliation from the district administration, it's alarming. The school board doesn't seem to value non-teacher school employees. Staff retention, transparency, and budget season. The biggest challenge is that our superintendent is... I can't read that. And vindictive. He makes decisions without informed input and never regards of the facts considered a decision. He puts protecting himself and the board from hearing anything challenging to him above the interest of students and staff. He has led good teachers and administration, administrators to leave. Also, our faculty managers, while skilled, is a poor manager, dislike, and often dishonest. I continue to feel like teachers and other staff members are not part of the decision-making process. Often decisions are made before speaking with staff or certain groups of teachers that are affected. I also feel like the district sometimes protects to get staff input, but the decisions are already made. I also feel like the district keeps adding more curriculum, but doesn't consider the amount of time we have to teach. Relationships with our central office administrators and a few districts, directors are problematic. The level of trust needed for staff members to be innovative and make mistakes is not there. Communication with the superintendent and upper administration is requested through principal. While the streamlines communications, it does not build trust. When people don't have the story communicated to them, they make it up. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Johnny. All right, next up is Steve DeAngelis.
My name is Steve DeAngelis. I'm a resident of Reedfield, and I feel like I'm competing with Tom for the oldest person award here, but Tom's got me on that one. But I, I have taught at Miranda Cook for 44 years. Recently retired, well, three years ago I retired, and we had all three of our children come to Miranda Cook and graduate, and I'm a resident of Reedfield on the St. Vincent Hill Road. So you've heard a lot of the comments from the survey, and we thought that was important to share those with you, so that we knew that all of you are on the same playing field, you'd all heard them. There's more, but we just didn't have time to all of them. So I also want to call your attention to some of the items that are at the start of the survey. I'm not going to go through all of them, but at the start, the survey asked for six areas, and I'll read you a couple of them. They said, "I trust and respect my principal," and asked for a rating from one to five, strongly agree, agree, and so forth down the line. And then, "I trust and respect my supervisor." agree and so forth down the line. And then I trust and respect my superintendent. So six identical questions, which just replacing the word principal with superintendent each one. So in those six areas, for the building administrators, the principals, the responses ranged from 85% to 92% positive, meaning agree or strongly agree. Nothing lower than 85%. For the superintendent level, the responses ranged from a low of 30% to a high of 45% with all but one of those replies less than 35%. 35% or less, I should say. So to the board, I know that you can't use survey results like this directly as a basis for evaluation or for discipline, but you can use them as a call to action. I would ask the board and the administration, what are you going to do to prevent another fiasco like what happened this past summer from occurring? I also would ask you to see that the fiasco with our middle school was just the part of the iceberg that is above the water. What will you do to allow you to see what is going on below the surface? Where the vast majority of the administration iceberg is? That is probably more important than the obvious part of the iceberg that we crashed into this summer. Looking below the surface will require the board to make a much, take a much more proactive role. In order to adequately provide the proper oversight, you need to gather data from sources other than the superintendent and the board chair. You get phone calls from concerned parents, I know, and sometimes an exceptionally brave staff member maybe. But the limited scope of how you get your information has been part of what puts us here now. I urge you to put in place structures and policies that broaden and deepen your knowledge of how the school district takes. And ensure that our teachers, staff, students, and parents have a confidential and safe way to get feedback directly to you.
If you could wrap up, Mr. Dangelis.
One last suggestion for improving the gathering of data and improving the flow of information. Revise the policies that govern school board meetings to allow more of a dialogue with folks at your meetings. A more open forum would not only produce more possibilities for action, but also be the start of making your decision-making much more transparent. And please remember, this district was founded as the Morantica Community School District and we will always do our best work for kids and families when everyone in the district has a voice that is heard and they are treated with the respect and kindness we all deserve. Thank you for listening and I look forward to seeing your actions that you will take to improve our administrative situation and you certainly have my attention.
Thank you. Next up is Craig Stevens.
Thank you very much, Board Chair. My name is Craig Stevens. I'm a Reed Field resident. Father of two children who have graduated and two who remain in RSU 38. We're talking today about the staff survey in our comments here. We're talking about the staff survey from May of 2025. It's 39 pages long. For anyone here today who has not received a copy or anyone who's watching the video and who has not received a copy, I am happy to email you a copy. Email me at iwantthesurvey@gmail.com and I will provide it to you. I'd like to discuss with the chair sort of the mechanics of how this survey came about. The title of it is the Massa and RSU 38 Communications Committee Staff Survey. Is it Massa, is that the union?
Yeah, association.
Okay. And the communications committee is the school board's communications committee. And so this is a document that was prepared with input from both of those organizations. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
And what was the purpose of having the school board communications committee involved in this process? Why was this staff survey an important document to have?
If my memory serves me correctly, and I think Leslie, you served on that committee.
I was on leave.
Oh, you're on leave, is we were approached by the association if they could come present at that meeting the survey.
Is the possible value of a survey like this to allow the board to evaluate the superintendent?
No, it's not. The survey is not, was not, that was very clear, it was not intended and could not be used as an evaluation tool. That was very clear.
Okay. Have you read this survey?
I have, I have.
Have you read it multiple times?
Yes, in parts more than others.
Okay. Does it have any value to you whatsoever?
Yeah.
What value does it have to you?
When I have conversations with folks and hope folks can, you know, be willing more to share than just the survey.
Sure. Does it shed light on the opinions of the community and staff?
I mean, it was, there was no community. I mean, staff members are members of the community, but sure, I mean, of staff.
Okay. So when did you first learn of this?
Last school year at some point. I don't recall the exact.
After May, maybe May or June?
I mean, of the survey, well before, before May or, not well before.
And when did you first receive the results, this document? When did you first receive this document?
I don't know.
Did you get it emailed to you?
Well, I'm sure.
Okay. You have renewed the superintendent's contract as of July 21st, right? Effective July 1st?
Yeah, you have the contracts. You've asked me for them. I gave them to you. So you know the answer.
Was there nothing about this, these survey results that gave you pause before you renewed that contract with the superintendent?
As I told you, it's not an evaluation tool. It can't be. You and I talked about this. It can't be used as an.
But you've read it repeatedly. Why did you bother to read it repeatedly?
People have asked me, I think, conversations about it. People ask me, so.
But Citizens comments aren't also supposed to be a debate.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer anyone.
And to be fair to Sean, at the end of one of the meetings before we ended the school year last year, he was clear to say, I was just trying to find the in the minutes, that there has been a review of some of the content of the survey and there were already some actions or some discussions that were already taking place in order to look at and address some of the specifics of what was in the survey. Survey is information and it's definitely not all-inclusive of everybody who is staffed here or community members in this district. So I just want to call the pause on that this isn't still supposed to be a debate in Citizens comments and Sean was clear on that and he's been gracious already. But also, we did already talk about some of the survey before we ended last school year and did talk about some of the work that's already going to be done.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that. If we look at those contracts.
Your time is up. The three minutes is up, Sean.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to meet with you at any time and as I have multiple times. Thank you. All right. Okay, you're, sorry, yeah, you can step right up. Okay, all right, sorry. Everyone was in, my apologies.
I wasn't going to run you down.
No, 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 you were in the room, so I thought you guys would.
I'm going to just change it up real quick and then I'll get back to my main talking points here. But I did see, looking through part of the, some of the old school board meetings that you have set your biannual budget. One of the items in there was, and my nieces are going to kill me, was like $100,000 towards resurfacing the tennis courts. If you take 50 steps to the south of the tennis courts, you walk across a baseball field that drops in some places 12 inches from the base path to the grass. That's a horrible, horrible way to play a sport. When you, in the kids, you ask any of the baseball players, they call it the Morantica hop because ground balls pop up at them right when they hit the infield. So when you talk about budgets and stuff like that, keep the baseball field in mind next time, please.
Certainly will. Look forward to you joining us during that time. I'll make sure you have the meetings.
I will go back to what we were talking about and that was building trust. Trust is like a pane of glass. When you have it, it keeps everything out. When you break it, it's almost impossible to put back together. And you've broken glass here. I'd implore you to figure out how you're going to build your community's trust back because it has been lost. Are you going to change something that you do? You're going to change the way you communicate? Anything that says we're putting an effort forward. I would really appreciate that. I brought it up last time. I'll bring it up again. Has anybody set expectations for your positions you oversee? It's hard to judge somebody on what they do if there are no expectations set. You should really be setting expectations. I will say, one of the things about building trust back, when you have major topics, maybe you should have public comment before you vote on certain things. I'm not saying everything, like exacting minutes, but on something like that so we can hear what's going on and then respond appropriately because maybe we have information that you may not be privy to. What we did do though with what's going on, and I know we're going to, I proposed the question, it's on the agenda, on why we're waiting so long to hire a new middle school principal. It doesn't matter what the answer is going to be out of this. You are delaying a hiring of your administrator of your middle school. You're going to tax your staff to cover for it because there's this great plan that's been put in place, but you're asking an athletic director to be the administrator of an area. That's not their job. I'm sure he's happy to do it, but that's still not his job. But really, what have you have lost? You have, the kids have lost out because now they're going to have to go through a new principal. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing in all cases, but starting a school year with a new principal is one thing. Going halfway through because somebody messed up and there's all kinds of turmoil around it, that's where they suffer because the teachers are suffering, staff is suffering. Everyone's being pulled in 100 different directions. So just think about that when you talk about renewing things or setting expectations. How do you build that trust and how do you make the kids the winners out of everything here? Thank you.
Thank you, too. All right, you can go ahead, please. Thank you.
My name is Ellis Stevens. I graduated from Morantica High School and I'm glad to see most of you. I think there's some new faces since I was here last week. But to the board members that were here last week, I wanted to ask if you thought about the question that I posed when I spoke last week. And I don't remember if any of you do remember that question and I don't even know if I asked you to raise your hand, if you could raise your hand and tell me if you remember what that question was. But what it was, was do we really feel like our district is better or better prepared going into this next school year with the loss of the previous middle school principal? And I hope that you guys did think about that because I asked that specifically of my school board in my community. The other thing I wanted to touch on is there, I'm not going to point fingers or names, but members of the school board who were reached out to and we did not get a response from them. So that does not help with the eroded trust. Because if we can't even get a response to our outreach, how do I know that anyone's listening? And we have some high school students, I believe, sitting on this board and it's important to be good role models for them. Maybe they will then graduate and decide to come back and want to serve on this school board and it's important for them to have, be dedicated to at least responding to the outreach from their community members. And that's on trust. And Chair Roderick, I look forward to seeing what great things you do with this upcoming school year. So good luck to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for being here again tonight. All right, is there anybody else? Anyone online, Diane? I don't see anybody, but. But I mean, no one online who wants to talk for public. I always do that. I realize there's people online. Sometimes I don't. All right. Next, we're going to move into additions, adjustments to the agenda by the board of superintendent.
I don't have, I don't have any tonight.
All right. Next up, we will have, we have reports. Does anyone have anything when it comes to those reports?
I asked the principals if they wouldn't mind getting up and just talking very quickly about something positive in their school from the first couple of days of school. So that looks like Michelle is willing to start us off.
I am, I have never, I'm not a baseball player, but I especially don't want to step down into that thing. Superintendent Sherrett asked us each just to say a little something about the first day. My day was beautiful and it was so long, so I don't even know like what to say, but two things come to mind. One is the same thing that comes to mind every year when I get to come back to school, to a new school year and my husband, who is not a teacher involved in education, doesn't. And when the people around me don't, it's students. It just changes everything and the people who choose to be here for them. None of us, from the superintendent down to the fabulous food service person who put out fresh local peaches today on the thing. That was my second thing. We're, none of us here for the money. We're none of us here for the power. We're here because we love doing this. And I was actually at the middle school and now I remember one of the teachers looked at me and said, "Don't you just love this?" In the first five minutes of the day and everybody was coming in and there was hats and craziness happening. And so that was my day and that's my celebration. Parents outside taking pictures of their kids on the first day of school. I got a picture of my nephew who's a new junior at UMO. Like we're still taking those first day pictures. So that's me.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, Mr. Boston.
What can we say about the first days? It's always fantastic. I've been doing this for 34 years as an educator, 26 as a principal. It never gets old. The level of enthusiasm from the staff, the faculty, the kids, parents, pitchers, new outfits, excited to be back in school. It's fantastic. It never, never gets old and it, you know, as old as I'm getting, it keeps me going. And to see also former students sitting on the board, growing up, I appreciate that as well. It makes me proud. So great start at Reed Field.
Thank you, Jeff. Abby?
Hi, I'm Abby Hafford. I'm the principal at Manchester Elementary School and I just want you to really know the schools are alive and they're dynamic and they're exciting and they're positive and they're fun. We spent the past two days, the children came in and the directive to teachers was to spend, take a week, two weeks to really establish routine, to establish classroom policies, classroom expectations so we don't dive right into learning. We do some review, some practice, some getting to know you. And the children have just risen to it. They, I didn't have one child in my office for two days. The teachers are happy. Everyone's behaving. They're really settled in. But that's that investment in time and routine and welcoming and getting to know you activities are hugely important and they build that foundation of what we're going to be working with all year. We began to implement the PAR program that we're doing, which is building assets and reducing risks. And already classrooms are working to build community within the classrooms amongst the students, with new students they're getting to know. And it's incredibly positive and exciting for all of us. We have a staff that is like really on board, invested, and happy to be here. But my last story is I'm going to tell you about the tree. On the back of our playground, we have a lovely, beautiful old tree that with, the building's 1952 and that tree was probably not far behind it. And this year it had to come down for safety reasons. It broke my heart because I love old trees. So we took it down, got pictures of it, saved parts of the tree for the kids. But with the resilience of your children, they're really just happy. We have a new stump on the playground. Play with that stump for hours and days. So they just see the beauty in absolutely everything.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Hard to follow them, so. I'm Michelle Hood and I'm the principal over. I'm Michelle Hood, and I'm the principal over at Mount Vernon Elementary. I'm actually not going to talk about the first two days. We actually did some exciting things I want to share with you about before school started, trying to build community. This year, we launched a new community relations initiative called the Welcome Back Bus. I think Holman saw us driving around as he was chopping wood. It was a huge success. The initiative served several important purposes. First, we were showing students that they were missed and that we are excited to welcome them back. It introduced a lot of my new staff to the community that they're serving. It allowed new staff to introduce themselves in a comfortable setting at students' homes. And it helped to build relationships and strengthen trust with our families. The response from families was incredible. Students were thrilled to see 15 staff members arrive in their driveway to greet them. And some families even shared that their children had been waiting in their yards for our arrival. It was a powerful experience that helped engage families and set a very positive tone for our year ahead. We also held our annual meet and greet event. Classroom set scavenger hunts, snacks, and activities for students to complete while meeting their teachers, catching up with friends, and acquainting themselves with their surroundings. Overall, Mount Vernon Elementary is off to a strong beginning. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Jacobs. I'm the principal at Wayne Elementary. Every single morning at Wayne, we start our day off with a morning meeting. And that includes the entire faculty, that includes every single student. And so on the first day, we talked a little bit about belonging. And today, we asked the students to share, how did you feel like you belonged yesterday on your first day of school? So I'm going to share some of the things that our kindergarteners said. They said, "Kids were kind to me. Other people helped me." And this is my absolute favorite. "Wayne is love." And I think that, you know, out of the mouth of babes, culture is not something that is, it's not left to chance here at Moranacook or at Wayne. It's something that we build, and that's a real testament to our staff and the work that they put in every single day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for sharing those. It's great. Here about the first days of school. Next up, we have some subcommittee meetings. You'll be hearing soon on what subcommittees you're on. If you haven't sent the recommendations yet, please, or you have your papers.
They're actually in your folder.
Yeah, you can email me as well. Fill them out if it's easier.
So you can get it to Sean, Amy, or myself.
I know some of you have done that, so... Yeah, there's a form. You should have a form in your folder.
It's in the handout part of the...
The handout, yeah, yeah. The handout part as well.
And if it's okay, Sean, just so the, especially for the new board members, we put in suggested dates based on the previous year. So when we first meet as a committee, we kind of finalize the dates and say, these are what we're going to do going forward. Sometimes we have to adjust those dates. So, so again, nothing is carved in stone at this point. We kind of meet as a group to decide when we have those meetings. So we just put the suggested stuff there. And again, it kind of looks like this in your packet, so, okay. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, no problem. Yes, go ahead, Brad.
Is there, we've got folks here, you know, curious about what's going on in school, obviously. Is there, is there a way for just regular citizens to get on these committees? Or is it really just for board members and admin folks? And if it is for these specific things, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't have a different kind of committee somewhere to try to get some feedback from folks building on what folks are talking about for communications and try and reel that up. You don't have to answer it now. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. Think about it for another couple of weeks. There are folks in the community, like Chip, who's worried about baseballs. And now he should worry about his nieces, who are, you know, his team's players, and they know where you live. But buildings, facilities, one of the huge things that I see in this report of the findings, that one of our schools was dead last out of 95 to get funded. And some of the other ones are 20, 30 years away from being rebuilt, according to how many schools are being rebuilt every year.
That was not a...
Those numbers should terrify people, because that means that all those costs of rebuilding multi-million dollar schools are going to weigh on our citizens' shoulders. It's, it's ready, but to get it... So to that point, when we talk about what are we going to do individually, schools and things, having that system, but, but, just throwing it out there.
You can answer right now. We have had committees in the past with community members on them. Sure, we can talk about that. I don't want to commit to anything, rake this stuff. I'm sure we can make that happen where it makes sense. And all the committees are open to the public, besides negotiations.
Budget committee, oh my gosh, the last...
Which means you don't have to pick. You could go to all of them.
Yeah, you can go to all of them. Chip, Chip, you're signed up. I'll send you the list. I'll text you.
Amy will just send you invites, Chip. Make sure she has your email, John.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but anyway, yeah, I think that's something we can look at. We have done that in the past with community members on. I've served on committees with community members, and I think that's a great idea. So let's look into that. It could happen. Okay, so there are some committee meetings that are scheduled to be determined. And as soon as we get those formed and get some dates, we will make sure those are made available. Next up are action items, approval of minutes of the June 11th, 2025 board meeting.
I move to approve minutes of June 11th, 2025 board meeting.
Second.
Have been moved in second. I need discussion. That was a long time ago, so I know some of you weren't even here. So all those in favor?
Is it appropriate to vote if you're not a board member then?
You can abstain.
You can abstain.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Can you keep your hands up, just so Amy can get the, sorry? All right, I think we're good. And who are, oh, sorry, Sean, I didn't speak for you.
The opposed abstentions. Yeah, no, that makes sense. Because you weren't on the... All right, we all sat there?
Yep.
All right, we're going to move right along to approval of minutes of the August 13th, 2025 special board meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 13th, 2025 special board meeting.
Have been moved in second, discussion?
So we didn't get the second on the resignations. I know Noah had moved it, but we didn't get the second. And we watched the video, and we just couldn't kind of figure it out. Do we know who seconded that motion?
I, I might have.
Okay, so we'll put Pat down. So we're going to amend the minutes as Pat was. There was somebody that spoke it, just like, we couldn't tell on the video who it was. So, so we'll put Pat in as the second. So we will amend the minutes to have that in there. Thank you.
So, well, we do amend the motion as amended.
Yep.
Everyone good for that? Perfect. All right. All those in favor? Yeah, you were there. Unanimous. Okay.
And would you guys like to abstain? Because you guys weren't at the meeting. We'll put you down as abstention. Thank you.
Next up is responses to public comments from special meeting. I spent some time with some board members writing up some responses. If people want to chime in, feel free. I'm going to go, I said I would respond to as much as I could. And so the first thing, I mean, the main question was, there was a lot, there were some questions about personnel type stuff. And we won't be discussing anything when it comes to personnel matters. Those won't be talked about by the board. So any personnel type things can't be, the board isn't allowed to talk about those things. So we won't be discussing those. So that is the answer. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yep.
Yeah, Tom, a looking.
Yep.
It was my understanding, and I was at that meeting, that there were no names mentioned, but there was a question about procedure and timing. What was the timing of the person let go? What procedures were used? And sitting here tonight, I'm not sure that your response... I sat on the school board. I know you can't talk about personnel. But there were issues raised about procedures and timing. We don't need to get into personalities, but I think the board needs to ask questions about an individual who was so highly respected in the community, and what procedures were followed. Not the personality of the superintendent or the principal, but what were the procedures and the timelines for letting him go? I don't feel that that has been addressed.
I'm going to stand by what I said. We're not going to be discussing it. And that is what we were advised. We did talk about an exec... This isn't a debate. We're moving on. We're not going to discuss it. If you have any questions, you can reach out after. Thank you. Next was brought up was about exit interviews. And if they're done, and if the board reviews those. They are done. They, the board did review them last year. Again, they're reviewed in executive session. They're not public documents. They are done. We did review them. And so, and they were, my, we will be reviewing them at a later meeting this year. So they will be reviewed. The next thing, there was a question.
Can I ask a quick question? Is every employee who leaves offered the opportunity? Because I understood that a couple who are no longer teachers here were not offered an opportunity for exit interview. But it also may just be the circumstance and timing. But is it intent for everyone to be offered that? And if that's the case, can that still happen for those who've left?
It is my understanding that they're offered. No one has come to me and told me they weren't offered to them. If someone wants to email me and let me know it wasn't, I'm happy to hear from them. And Jay, if you want to...
Yeah, I would only speak about this in executive session, so...
That's what I can say. And we did review them, and we will be reviewing them at a later point this year. When it comes to the strategic plan, that is correct. It was not completed. It was done with, the ones that I have reviewed in the past were done by HR, the HR person that we had. We...
We have the HR personnel, right?
We do. Yes. I haven't reviewed any since then. That's all I can say. I can only speak to what I know. I can only speak to what I know.
I can speak to my personal experience. I was offered, and I know Richard Aspinall was offered...
We really shouldn't be talking about other people. Just be aware.
I was offered, and others were offered, one of the administrators to be one of the principals or someone else. And we were actually given the choice to be sure we'd be comfortable with the answers. So I did have an exit interview, and I appreciated the opportunity.
Thank you for, I didn't, yeah, no, I didn't... When it comes to the strategic plan, it wasn't completed. I had talked to the superintendent about that. And we are going to hire someone to help complete that. So that will be happening soon. We're hoping to have that ready for this meeting. But it didn't happen. That's where we're at. Sharing the facts. When it comes to future, you know, surveys, Brian knows I'm going to talk about this. So Brian Tarbuck is going to head up a committee to look at doing a 360 survey, where community, teachers, anybody can participate. I don't know all the mechanics. It's pretty cumbersome. I've looked at some other districts that have done it. And I actually talked to main school management today, and they have some guides to go by. And so we will be looking at that. That will be happening if decided on by policy, the committee and the board. It is and can be used to evaluate the superintendent. It can be. I'm saying it's going to. I, I don't want to speak for the board. I have no role to speak for the board, but it could. And I mean, I've heard from folks, and it'd be an opportunity. That will be done, and also could have questions to evaluate the board. I mean, a main way to evaluate the board is to run for the board, too, if you wanted to. And I wish more people, it's great to have a full board, but for a number of years, I served on the board, and we didn't have a full board. So we will, we will work on that, so...
I have a question over there.
Nope. Okay, sure.
Will their, like, the survey, will that show people's emails?
We would have to work, I, I can't answer the specifics on that. That's why there'll be a committee, and we will work through those details. I, I, there's a lot more that I need to learn. Brian, and he's participated in these through other avenues. And we will, we will work through that. So that's what I've got there. When it comes to, there is an HR person now, and I believe, it was my understanding, I wasn't there, that she was introduced to people at back-to-school days. It's my understanding. I heard from teachers that happened, so I assume they, it happened. I wasn't there, but I was told that happened. I think that is what I've got. That's what I have, so... The hiring time, that's on the agenda a little later. We will get to that. I do have notes on that, but that was added to the agenda, because you requ... That was added. So that's what I have.
Question? I have another quick question. The draft strategic plan, the one that went and then stopped. Anybody that's been involved in strategic plans loves those, too. Is there a draft somewhere that we can get a copy of? I don't know that I've seen it, and I haven't. I apologize for... Somebody can send me a link to whatever we have that's a working document so far. That'll be great. Again, the extent, you could stick it on the website somewhere, so anybody who...
Existing one already lives on the website, even though its term is expired, if you will. And then we were in the middle of the work of the new one, and had to cease for a number of different reasons. Things that came up that became more tactically important. So, but there is, there is notes and minutes and a whole whole sheet. I can share with you, Brian, quite how far we got.
Yeah, that's cool.
It's a priority to start that work back.
And that included community, it included a whole stakeholder, subset of people from all the towns, from teachers to community members, board members. And that's what we shared.
Thank you. My other notes were about the timeline. And then I think there was a question asked of me, what would I would tell people about RSU 38? And I think I shared that earlier. I share everything through the lens of my children. My daughter had a great time here. I asked her what she thought of her time here. She loved it. She learned a lot, and it well-prepared her for her time at MSSM. She was excited. I don't know if I'm supposed to, maybe I'll scold myself, but she loved Mr. Aspinall, and he thought she was a huge help to her and her success in her sophomore year at MSSM. I asked my son, and he told me, he said, "I love my teacher's dad." I was so excited. He probably will kill me and be like Chip. He was so excited to see Miss Stewart at, not Miss Stewart, I didn't mean to say Miss Stewart. That's another thing I was reading. Miss Satterfield, Miss Ryder, sorry. At the soccer game, we went to the soccer game. We've gone to the football game. We've gone to a lot of stuff, because he loves sports. He's bummed he's going to be gone Friday night, and I get to go to the first football game. He loves them. He was very happy to see them. He's got, the lacrosse coach has his literacy. It was great. And he loves it here. And that's what I would tell anybody on how my kids view it. And they love, he loves the coaches. He's excited to run cross-country tomorrow in Mr. La Joy. He actually talked about it with his hockey, he's a hockey coach that came to visit him today about how he runs cross-country, and it's really hard, but he loves it. The team's a lot of fun. So that's how I would talk about Moranacook. And I would still talk about Moranacook, and a half. And I moved here. I never went to school here, never graduated from here. I moved here because my wife did a lot of research on the district and thought it was a great place. and thought it was a great place, and she still thinks that as well. And so, I was asked to answer that, so I did. Thank you. We are gonna move on to exceptions of donations.
I move that we accept the donations listed. Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
Do they get posted with the rest of our, like, meeting minutes? Like, we post our minutes. Are donations like an attachment of that packet of that? Because I mean, the list this time is fairly long, and some people have really stepped up. And I think it's just amazing. It's too bad we sort of don't... I just wanna make sure it goes online, so everybody can go and see.
It was in the package too, correction.
It was in the agenda packet, right? Thank you.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Thank you for everyone who continues to make donations. They're greatly helpful. We'll call for a vote. All's in favor? All right. I think it's unanimous. So thank you. Acceptance of resignation, Karina Decker, middle school teacher.
I move we accept the resignation of Katrina Decker, middle school teacher.
Haven't been moved in second.
Who was the second? Sorry. Noah, thank you.
Noah, Noah. All those in favor? I think it's unanimous.
Okay, ask the non-fairly question.
You can.
What if we say no? It's like, they're gone. I wish you were still here very much.
Ratification of teachers hired during the summer.
I move to ratify the teachers that were hired during the summer. Second.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? There was a list of them in your board packet, so.
Was there a music teacher that I saw in there? Or like the elementary school?
Yes, both the music teachers.
That was like a big thing. Everybody's like, why can't you guys get... So finally, then two.
My son, yep, my son said there was two. Easter salmon.
That's a way we're all.
We're gonna have you teach, Brian, part-time. Your wife's signed along.
My hearing's gone.
All right. All those in favor? Perfect. It's great to... I've met a few of them here and there. Great to have them in RSU 38. Okay, what do we got here? Approval, calendar changes. Jay, if you wanna share what's happening, I read it. And Brian, it's like he answered one of your questions. You asked me about why it was on... How could it be on Election Day, graduation? You asked me that at the soccer game, and it was like Jay heard it. Or somebody heard it.
Hang on, just...
I was gonna take credit for being on the agenda. I won't do that.
So, yeah, so the Augusta Civic Center contacted us after school had ended, and just let us know, or kind of reminded us that even to their to their mistake as well, that nobody caught that Tuesday is, that second Tuesday of the month is Election Day. And Augusta uses a civic center as a voting station. And they needed to go back to that. So, they had booked us in, but they offered, because they booked us in, they offered to comp the day, meaning they wouldn't charge us the cost of graduation at a civic center this year only, because it was kind of their mistake if we agreed to move to Monday for next year only. And then you'll note that I, in the future, when we do calendar, we're gonna have to have the discussion of, do you want graduation to be on a Monday? Or do you want to change it in some other capacity? So, for this year, it's spelled like a win-win. Move it to Monday. They actually pay for it and compass for it. I don't wanna say they're paying for it. They compass for us. So, that's the first calendar change that we're asking for, is moving graduation from Tuesday, the 8th, to Monday, the 9th. And then the second change that we're asking for is that we had originally scheduled an early release on Thursday, March 12, followed by a full-day workshop on March 13. This came from, input from the administrative team who wanted to take advantage of something called Rendezvous that's put on by the Western Maine Educational Collaborative over in Farmington. They haven't done it in several years. Pre-COVID, we had never taken advantage of it because of CAT's calendar issues. We've always had to kind of not go to it. So, they are asking if we could potentially go to it this coming year and just move it from those days, from the half-day on the 19th to the full-day on March 20th. So basically, just push those two days back a week so that our teaching staff could take advantage of the rendezvous workshop put on by the Western Maine Educational Collaborative. And this year, we're actually able to do it because Winthrop already had this similar days. So we just follow Winthrop. It doesn't affect the CATC calendar. So I bring it, brought it to you guys for your consideration and answer any other questions that may come up.
I think it's great. I'm glad we're able to make this work. I know the town clerk in Reedfield will be happy, because she, when I registered my cars tonight, she asked me about it again. And I said, "Magic. It's hopefully gonna be fixed tonight." I don't know if she has somebody graduating she must, because she's asked Brian, and she's asked me.
You can back Kristin Marks for this. My arm's a little bent.
So, and I think it's great we're able to get it so the teachers and folks can go to this, so I think it's great. So, all those in favor?
Oh, we need a motion. Nobody actually moved it.
Will we approve the calendar changes?
Second.
All right, moved in second.
Discussion is just to be clear. The dates, the changes happen to misspeak, so I just wanna make sure the notes are still correct. But it says graduation's currently on Tuesday, the 9th, and you're proposing it goes as to Monday, the 8th.
8th, yes. Thank you.
Monday, 8th?
Yes, because we also know how important it is for people to make plans around these, including childcare, and obviously, plans for graduation. So we bring in it, obviously, first thing, and we'll get a new calendar out as quickly as we can tomorrow.
Perfect. That should be, hopefully, plenty of notice. All right, now all in favor. Jump the gun. All right, unanimous. Thank you. Then the next thing is the middle school principal hiring time.
So again, in your packet, it's close to the back. I tried to highlight what we were trying to do during this time. So, the month of September, we're looking, we're, obviously, in our second day of school. I have a survey that I would like to put out to the community, and I listed there the families, the parents, community members, students, and staff, so that we kind of can use that information to help guide us in our principal search, in drafting questions that reflect the survey results, and use that information to also prepare the job posting, which we would get out if we can get it out in September. I would really like to get it out in September. But worst-case scenario, it would be right at the beginning of October. Get our interview committee together, accept applications, make sure our questions are ready, and begin interviews in October as soon as we have viable candidates that come through. And then, if we can get interviews started in October, then we can actually bring a candidate to the board, plan a start date, and start transition planning, and implement the transition plan in the month of December, if all goes well. So, obviously, that is contingent upon the candidates we get that might apply for the position, so.
That was the question. The question. That's not what I made. Email this and ask if we can get it done. It doesn't make any sense to wait this long. Sorry. That's... That's the reason that we're all... Did you have any email that was submitted?
Yeah, I do.
Would you like to hear it?
Sure.
Says if the middle school principal's position is funded in the budget year and the school year, why are we waiting until November to start the process that was the original plan? Why are we looking to hire now? Why are we watering down our own administration? That was the question. That was the ask in the agenda. Not to re-explain what it puts me on.
All right, thanks. Motion to return?
I feel like we oughta talk about the timeline of the...
Okay, if you have a question, yeah. I don't have a good answer.
I'm looking at this schedule, and I'm very glad to see it's faster. Do we expect, based on past practice or whatever, much of a change in the job description of a middle school principal? I don't know if it's the same in Mattinokook as it is anymore, because it is at Marinacook. But is there, is there any potential changes here that are dramatic? It would make things really different? Or do we not expect to see much in the way of changes of the job description?
That's why I wanted to put out the survey, so that we had some information.
So we get some input on it.
Right.
So, to me, it's a pretty fast schedule. If you can get through September, get a survey out, because it's three days in already. Get information back, make any proposed changes, and then list it in the position. Put that out there, see who's interested. Is there, to Chip's point there, if you found the ideal candidate, like, wow, this person's gonna be great, we could hire him as soon as they said, yes, right, conceivably. Right, so we wouldn't have to wait till January.
No.
Given all that, do we feel like this is about as fast as we can reasonably go? Or would you say, do we need the feedback and everything from the community on this? Or do we just wanna put a job advertisement out now in the interest of speed? I guess that's the question we should just talk about.
When can you get it advertised? Is that the problem that we need to put together and advertise?
We can get an ad out as quickly as you guys wanna get the ad out. My original thought, in all fairness, was to try to give people a chance to give some input on what we were looking for, for the principal position. If it's the pleasure of the board, and you're saying to me, please get an ad out tomorrow, we can work on getting the ad out in the next couple of days. We certainly can do that.
The community can add to that, but you want some...
Sir, this is not a town hall forum. This is a school board meeting, so please stop. Please, please, I asked you to stop. This is not a town hall-style meeting. This is a school board meeting, and there's a public comment area, and you've had that time, so please stop. Thank you. Brian, go ahead.
As far as like a straw poll goes, in the interest of expediency, I like what you're saying, Jay, because clearly, there's lots of folks here who are interested in getting more feedback. The question, I guess, for all of us to think about now is, do we have enough feedback? Do we wanna just move forward and post this or not? And I think that's a conversation we oughta have.
Leslie, go ahead.
I think we have to be really careful when we say that there's been a lot of feedback that's widespread through our community and through our staff. We have had some feedback, but I think that what might be alarming is to know that we've had positive feedback in some of the changes in the way folks have stepped up and the encouragement that we have with some of the plans that have been put in place. And I think that if those that are only sitting in the room today believe that we're not listening to the whole community when we're saying things that aren't aligning exactly to only folks that are in this room, which let's not disregard. We have some of our staff and administrators in this room that do an amazing job. And that the folks that actually also have some positive things to say are sometimes as afraid to speak up as the folks that are being represented as being afraid to speak up when they have something that's critical to say. So for every comment that comes forward, no matter how it does come forward, whether it's positive or in critique, there's multiple community members, and that includes staff, that may agree with you, disagree with you, or be unaware. And so I think, I don't feel like we're doing our job as a board to only believe, and I don't think the community is thinking through, that we aren't only hearing from a negative pocket of the community. We're hearing positive statements from other staff and community members as well. We get lots of communication from everybody around us in lots of different ways. I do think, and this is only my opinion, so I'm not speaking for Mount Vernon or anything else at this point, that I do think that having an administrator like Michelle La Forge being willing to step up and with the plans with Cal and Chris to get through the beginning of this year without a new face and to try and help smooth over getting the school year started, was helpful than to also introduce a new face, which doesn't mean that would have been a wrong plan either. All I'm saying is that when we critique one plan, we're sometimes critiquing two plans. Both can be true at the same time. So while there is some discouragement around whether we have done X or Y, we have also done Z. And that doesn't make that always a bad plan. It just makes it different. So I really encourage folks here, and not here, and those who also go online, look at the minutes, and also go on YouTube and replay this meeting back, because they all go there, to understand that if you have positive things to say, I encourage you to also speak about those more widely and in lots of other channels, because there is positive things, and there are positive feelings about our exact current state we're living in right now, as well as there being some frustration and discouragement also about where we are right now. And I think it needs to be fairly understood that if we're not sitting here considering all of those, whether they're sitting here right now or not, then you're also asking us not to do our job while accusing us of not doing our job.
Thanks, Leslie.
Sorry if that has any backlash.
No, that's what we're all here for, to say what we feel. No. Let me get to any other board members, please. Anyone else? Yep, David, go ahead.
See if I can keep my thought. On Leslie's points, I remember one time, about the time of the pandemic, when we had a group that came in. They were adamant about something, and the board listened and voted that way. And then the kickback was immense because that group, while having legitimate concerns, was not representative of the majority of the community, and the board had to backtrack. So with Leslie, I approve of us listening carefully to everyone and considering everything, including looking at procedures and timing. And that is, I believe, things that can go through the policy committee and be handled by the board and dealt with by the board, but not in an open discussion at the meeting. On the other part of the question, I really appreciate the idea of the survey. And I don't think we necessarily even should not have that. But as Leslie indicated, we have a lot of good feedback from, I feel, all sides of this issue, and from all the contact I've had. We're taking it very seriously. And so, I would like, we have sort of a conflict there that Jay, but all of us, I think, want feedback to help us on these things. But I go with the idea of moving promptly. I would make a motion that we ask Jay, maybe still to put out the survey, but to move forward with putting out, looking for a new principal? Whatever, as promptly as possible, while not necessarily stopping the idea of a survey. It's a long motion, but that's sort of my idea.
All right.
Is there a second?
A second that is appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, there's a motion in a second, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there's discussion. Mr. Omen?
Yeah, I'm trying to be clear what the motion was there. Um, I think there's a couple, there's a what could you dump there? Um, a survey seems valuable. I don't want to be confused with a 360 evaluation, which is a broader thing. And I would love to see the survey, us as board members before it goes out, because this is not, well, you know, a restructure of the middle school and that's like, what's, clearly what we want for the principal. I would like to see the job posted as soon as possible. I think the survey has value, but I also want to be clear, like, just exactly what the survey's after. Hiring this time of year, I think when the survey out will give us information, because we don't know, like, are we gonna get credible candidates or not? Um, I think what the administrators here, Michelle and others and the teachers are in their usual manner, like just being extraordinary and flexible. I think it's making the best of was a problematic and unfortunate situation. But, so I don't like, I think, you know, people always arise, I'm so, I'm so grateful for that. But I would like to see the post as soon as possible and survey, but just want clarity, what, what the survey, what's that trying to gather information to inform?
You asked them.
I, I just wanna, I think Jay is right to try to gather some information and make sure that the community as a whole has a chance to get input in, you know, what we're considering our middle school principal to be. But I want to just share my interview experience here as an alternative way to maybe do it. When I came to interview at Moran Cook in 1978, um, I came from an engineer's position and I, and I thought I knew a lot. But I walked into the interview rooms in the media center, they pulled two of the long cables together and there was 16 people around that committee, that table. Community members, parents, high school kids, the superintendent, the administrators. And it lasted an hour and a half. I have never sweated so much in my life. And the hardest questions came from the high school kids. I'd be like, uh, duh, 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 I swear that was all my answers. And I got all done with that and I'm like, phew, okay. I was way harder than any engineering interview. And then they say, okay, now we're onto phase two. And they took me into the music room and there was another dozen people for another hour and a half. And they just involve the community so deeply in the hiring process. Just an idea.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
One other thing, and by no means am I seeking to undermine the process developed here. I just wanna, I just wanna have that.
No, no, I appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second. Um, any more discussion?
Uh, can we hear the motion again?
Yeah, can you, see, I can you maybe tighten it off? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The basic motion is that we ask the superintendent to move forward as quickly as possible with posting the job. The other things about the survey are just part of the discussion really, uh, that we're not against it at all. But the motion is, is that we ask the superintendent as a board to move forward as quickly as possible with posting the job.
Okay. All those, wait, no, no question? Yeah, you can talk though. I would like it, not the only one.
So um, I really like the idea of input because there's a lot of really positive things going on and positive opinions. Um, and I think, I, I didn't mind the uh, um, information that Jay gave us, the timetable. And um, people are working right now and I know Michelle's amazing. Um, and I like the idea of getting the kids settled and not pushing this so fast because um, we, I really think input's very important for our community. So this question's for Jay. What do you think of uh, putting up or pushing the timeline up a little bit, but getting a survey out like we have in the timeline? So we hear from more people? Is that doable? Is that?
Yeah, no, I will get the posting ready first and then I'll get the survey out right after, so.
Okay.
And we'll still have the information in time for the interview process, so I feel like we'll be okay.
So this, this does sound like a good idea to you.
I think we can make it work.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there a quick follow-up?
Yes, Brian, go ahead.
Is, is there anything uh, negative about that, Jay, potentially, by trying to get that out sooner than later? And I'm just curious from, I, I know you guys are chugging on a thousand balls. It's day, what, one? I mean, it's nuts, so.
I, it's all depends on the applicant pool. I don't know, I mean, I'd love to be able to say there's hundreds of people out there with unused certificate that would love to step into the position, but I don't know that. So a lot of this is, it's all applicant, you know, applicant-dependent, I should say. Um, and it, looking for someone right at the start of a school year for a leadership role like this, not gonna lie, it's gonna be tough, so.
Sorry, Kristen, go ahead.
Thank you. Jay, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but about the position, the budget?
Yeah.
Is, do you have any clarity on where, like, or does that money roll over if we don't use it?
Yeah, no, we've got the money for the position, it's not a problem.
No.
No, if we didn't.
The position is not filled, right? So we're not paying.
It goes into our carry forward at the end of the year, yes.
That's, okay, thank you, just to clarify.
Yep.
Leslie, go ahead.
And, and also, I think there's always a chance that a posting gains us candidates that still aren't the right fit for our district.
Hundred, hundred percent.
Want to make sure that we're not always focused on filling seats if they're the wrong people, that we still really focus on filling seats with the right people.
Uh, Chad, go ahead.
How does the public service help people find those seats? Like, don't we have procedures in place and standards in place? That we're already looking for an appropriate advocate for this job like any other job? Whether you're a doctor, whether you're a electrician, everybody has standards. Don't we have those standards in place now of what we're looking for? So yes, maybe we may get 10, but let's start the process of elimination and see who may be better.
So I don't think it's a question that there's a job description, like, issue with our middle, a middle school principal, like a job description that we have for lots of stuff and we just chipped away at I don't know how many last year in the job description committee to continue to hash this out, flush those out, make them really clear. Uh, I think it's just around, like, we could still get applicants for folks that don't feel like they fit this district, even if they have qualifications and so. And that's just to be determined. I just want to make sure that I said, I don't think it's important that we only fill a seat if it doesn't feel like it's the right person sitting in the seat.
I think that.
That's all.
Leslie, I agree with that. Um, I'm on board with moving forward as amended, as, uh, amended as motioned and uh, we'll see what happens and hopefully, I appreciate, I just want to say, I appreciate all the work Michelle has done. I know my son was in Cal and everybody, my son was happy about the hand stamps this morning. I heard about those, so I think you do a really.
The middle school was thought that, and it was lucky in some ways. Harvey. And then all of them, and high school was working on it.
Yeah, so I appreciate all that, so I think we're good to. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do here. Think we're good to uh, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Looks unanimous?
Unanimous, alright. So that is it for tonight. We're adjourned.